Thank you. So, moving on to the regular agenda, starting with case 9ZN 1997 number two, the Astria and Associates case. And let's, okay, we have Ms. Meredith Tessier.
Hey, Tessier.
Tessier.
You got it. Thank you.
I even tried, okay, I'll get it, I'll get it.
Okay, well, good evening Chair Higgs and Commissioners. I'm Meredith Tessier with the Planning Department, presenting on behalf of Greg Bloomberg tonight, the case before he is Astria and Associates, 9ZN 1997, number two. And I'm sorry, I'm just waiting for that monitor to also kind of clean up too, for one second with the PowerPoint presentation. Okay, I think we're good. All right, thank you. The subject site is located on the south side of East First Avenue and west of North Scottsdale Road, as highlighted in yellow. Before you was a close-up aerial of the surrounding uses comprised of retail, personal care services, restaurants, and also offices. And before you is the current zoning district where the applicant today is requesting a zoning district map amendment from, I'm sorry, I can't see the screen, downtown office commercial type one downtown overlay. Sorry. I think we're okay here. To downtown multiple use type two downtown overlay for a new three-story mixed-use development. The Old Town Character Area Plan designates this site as downtown multiple use, which encourages redevelopment to strengthen the Old Town. The Old Town Character Area Plan also designates this site as type-two development, which supports intermediate, higher-scale development. Some key items of consideration today is that the site is a reinvestment and revitalization to the underutilized site. There is a stipulated site plan from previous zoning case 9ZN 1997. The applicant is not requesting any amended development standards or bonus development standards as part of this request. It's also important to note that the proposed building is going to be moving more forward on the northern portion of the site and away from the lower-scale type-one boundary to the south. And most recently, as Tim Curtis noticed noted, sorry, that there were some comments received from the general public regarding some concerns about the refuse enclosure as well as the accessible parking stalls. Let me get to the site plan there. Before you is the proposed site plan where access to the site is provided along the alleyway. This is an updated site plan where the refuse enclosure is no longer angular. It's now pull-out and a roll-out concept, which as such will then provide an additional onsite parking stall. Another modification to the site is that the existing driveway along East First Avenue is going to be curbed and provides three additional street parking stalls that would be diagonal consistent with without there today. Before you are the black-and-white building elevations that are three-story. Just keep in mind that this will be going to the Development Review Board for their review and approval. And then here's the applicant's rendering of the proposed building concept in relation to the existing developments on the east and west side of the site. So I'll conclude my staff's presentation with the action requests, which again is a zoning district map amendment, from downtown office commercial type-one downtown overlay to downtown multiple use type-two downtown overlay for the subject site. So that concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions as well as the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tessier. I was going to ask if the applicant, Mr. Greg Loper, would like to add anything, but he has also put in a request to speak. So, Mr. Loper, would you like to present or speak?
Thank you very much, Chair Higgs, members of the Commission. My name is Greg Loper. I'm representing Astria Wong, who has held her real estate office at this location for over thirty years in a forty-year-old building. She and all of us are extremely excited to bring this before you tonight for consideration. One thing I wanted to point out real quick is that the building massing, what can be developed on the property in terms of scale, that is something that can happen today under the existing zoning. The zoning is really to bring it into compliance with the type-two general plan designation, the Old Town Scottsdale Downtown Plan, as well as to allow for the three residential units on it. I want to thank Meredith for pinch-hitting a lot of calls and emails back and forth to her today and Mr. Bloomberg, if he's listening, they appreciate that as well. That's really a summary of what we're doing. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions or address any issues.
Thank you, Mr. Loper. Before I move to public comment, do we have any questions or comments from the Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Otte? Oh, Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to know, I saw that there was an ADA parking in front of, so I imagine it's in front of the building.
I apologize, I can't see well far. Commissioner Gonzalez through the chair. The ADA spot is off of the alley. All the parking for the use has to come off of the alley. It's part of what's required under the Old Downtown Scottsdale Plan. I know I'm butchering the name, I apologize. So, if I can, if everybody can hear me.
It needs to be on the microphone, so that the people online can hear.
You have to be, you have to be at the microphone.
Are you able to see it on the actual?
As smart.
You can pull it up.
Screen. There we go. Oh, it's teamwork. Thank you.
Yeah, the ADA spot, excuse me, is right here. Access is off of the alley. The refuse container, and I want to make a quick thank you for a friendly amendment to our site plan considerations by the next speaker. But we still have the ADA. It was a different configuration prior. This project's gone through a tremendous evolution. It started at the height of the pandemic, actually prior to that, and going back and forth on orienting things. But we like the way that this looks. Again, appreciate the friendly amendment to it. But we do have the ADA parking, parking spaces in the rear, roll-off refuse container, as was mentioned. In addition, as also was mentioned, we close off the driveway onto First Avenue, add extra angle parking. Then also, it's probably good to know that just across the street from us is a parking structure. So there's more than adequate parking in the area.
Okay, so I guess maybe what I was inquiring about on the ADA, was that something that you requested? Or is that something that you agreed to with staff? Or how did that come about?
We agreed to it with staff. Since the adoption of the ADA, it's always a consideration for making sure that it's easily accessible, has the accessible route to the building itself. In this one, and we do have our architect here, I believe it just came about as the evolution of the site plan from staff saying, you need to have an ADA parking space.
Okay, so I guess shortly what I'm trying to get to the point is, staff recommended to you an ADA at this juncture?
That's my recollection of, yeah.
You want to comment on that, Mr. Curtis?
Yeah, Madam Chair and Commissioner Gonzalez, the parking code does require ADA accessible parking. You know, there's a practical issue with some of these smaller properties. So we could continue having a discussion with the applicant team on whether or not that needs to be signaled for ADA parking space and sized. But just a strict look at the code, it does require a percentage of the spaces to be accessible. And so the applicant's showing it on the plan. But either way, we have adequate parking and we can continue the dialogue about the practical use of that space. Thank you.
Thank you for your clarification. I guess maybe what I'm trying to assess is this, because of the size of the frontage, and I guess we basically look at the frontage as what we have to park. Is that correct?
So, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Commissioner Gonzalez, the parking is based off of the square footage and the land use.
Right.
Not so much the frontage of the property.
Okay, but it does enter in the calculation. Am I correct on that?
I'm sorry, again, the calculation is based off of the square footage of the land use, the type of land use and the square footage of the building.
Okay, so actually, the footprint of the building is actually is the requirement?
Well, Commissioner Gonzalez, if you have multiple floors, you're going to have to park the square footage on the individual floors. And then different land uses have different parking requirements.
Yes, okay, that's good. Thank you for that clarification. I guess maybe what I'm questioning is, is that sometimes because of the size of the buildings, and there's quite a few of these type of projects probably going to happen in the future, I don't want to set a precedent of one thing or another as far as staff recommendation or anything. But I guess maybe what I'm getting at is, is such a small amount of frontage and area, what is the exact ratio for ADA parking for that kind of a structure?
So, Madam Chair and Commissioner Gonzalez, the code requires four percent of the required parking to be handicap accessible. And so that amounts to a fraction of one, we round that up to one space. And so that's what the code requires. And again, we could continue having a discussion of whether it needs to be restricted to just ADA. But that's what the codes say. It's not a recommendation of staff, it's what the code says, so.
Okay, I guess, I guess basically what I'm getting to the point of, for everybody who's concerned with this, is that sometimes these projects are so tight, not necessarily this one, but projects in the future to come, will be severely restricted by having an ADA requirement on some of these projects. Now, maybe not on this project per se, but you know, in the future, looking forward, I'd like to be able to get, see where there's a common ground for these ADA projects, only because I know, being in the construction business for a while, I know what the cost is to some of these single private property owners. I know what it does to the, offsets the ratios. Four percent is not a lot, but that's what, that's what the code says. I'm fine with that. It's just that I don't want to hem in any particular owners in just providing ADA when we have to figure in their total calculations of parking. And I guess that's all I really have to say about it. I just wanted to make sure that we go forward looking into the future of how will we do our calculations. I know the council has gone through this and has looked at it, but I didn't really see much on the ADA side of this being discussed. So, I'm just bringing it forward because of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to respond to that, Mr.?
No, I think Steph did a great job.
Okay, great. Commissioner Otte.
Following up on what Commissioner Gonzalez asked, Mr. Curtis mentioned that the code requires four percent of the parking be for ADA spaces. Does the code specify that you have to round up? I mean, I think typically, okay, I'm getting a head nod, so apparently that's the case. So you, the code says you got to round up, so that means you've got to have something. You know, my larger concern, I appreciate the ordinances, I appreciate the codes, I appreciate the engineering and the cost of construction and so forth. But from my perspective, I'm most concerned with, is there enough parking for this building? We're supposed to have one and a quarter spaces, I believe, for the third floor. We're supposed to have two spaces for the second floor. I guess we do have three spaces here, but two are in the garage and, you know, one is marked handicap. Are these spaces going to be assigned to the various tenants, so that each tenant is going to have a space to park?
Is that a question to me?
Yes, yes.
My apologies, through the Chair Higgs, to Commissioner Otte. Very likely, they would be assigned. There are, under this scenario, we actually gained a spot over previous versions, so we like this very much. But we do conform with the parking requirements for the residential office component of this particular project, but we will likely assign them. There, two of them, I should note, are within a garage.
Right.
So, they would definitely be assigned.
And they would be assigned to the individual tenants, so that each tenant would have a space. How would you handle that handicap spot? I mean, does that mean that you could only rent the property to someone who qualifies for that?
I have to confess, that's a great question that we've debated internally for a little bit of time. It sounds like in hearing the planning director's comments, that we may have some negotiation about if that's the handicap spot or not. Remember also, if a resident needs it, absolutely, we would accommodate that. But there are, to the best of my knowledge, accessible spots along the street frontage. So, this one would be intended specifically for the use. Others would be intended for people who are visiting the area or the office building. So we would try to accommodate if we needed it. I hope I'm answering your question.
May I ask, pardon me, Mr. Loper, Commissioner Otte, can you repeat the question that you asked?
I'm curious if the parking spaces on the property would be assigned to specific tenants, such that each tenant would have a space to park?
Yes. The handicap space would not be assigned unless it was needed by one of the tenants.
But then you would, if it wasn't assigned, then you would be short one space for one of the three tenants?
And that gets back to a dilemma that we've had regarding the provision for handicap parking on this particular site. And I think that that's going to be a discussion item going forward. Is it, is there a possibility that it can be allowed for non-handicap uses? How does that occur, so that we're not in violation of something?
It is my understanding that those spaces, those angled spaces out on the street are not assignable.
No, 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 and I'm not saying they are.
No, I didn't think that you were, but I just wanted to clarify that. So there's, they're there, but if, you know, if there's a, if those places are filled, when a tenant comes home, he's got or she has no place to park. And again, not to beat a dead horse here, but each tenant is supposed to have a space.
And under the scenario, there is a space for each unit. The question is about what becomes with the fourth parking space. And I think that's one we're going to have to discuss with staff, whether or not that's accessible or a standard parking space.
I'm sorry, with the fourth space?
Yeah, if you look here.
On the right up I had, there were just.
There are two spaces here in the garage.
Yeah.
A space here, and a space here, if I'm looking at that correctly.
Okay.
So, this is, this is different slightly than the one that was directly included in the staff report. This is something that we've worked with today with staff, as we're trying to go through how to make refus and parking work on this. But there are four parking spaces on the backside of this building that may be different than the actual site plan in front, that came with your packet.
Okay, right. In that, I had, the garage had two spaces. There was one accessible space. So, a total of three on that page, on the project narrative page, three. So there were three onsite spaces and two spaces in the garage. So, I guess what you did is put the two together and divided by two and came up with four. So, I guess it all works.
That new math. It is a last-minute change to the site plan, and as stated, we're still going to be discussing the ADA spot. But we do presently have four spaces at the rear of the building, the accessible off the alley.
Mr. Curtis, can you confirm, is the site plan information that we have in our packet, has that since been updated?
Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, it has been updated. The site plan that's shown now is the same one from the presentation and with the applicants discussing, four in the back, two of which are in the garage, one of which is currently contemplated being restricted for ADA accessibility.
My apologies on that. So, you do have the correct one.
So then the three non-accessible spots could be assigned.
Correct.
And, okay. I bet you're not willing to commit to, yes, they will be assigned. It's that they probably or likely are.
They'll, they'll very likely, I don't.
Very likely. Well, we're getting closer.
If.
We're getting warmer.
If it needed to be a condition, we certainly could commit that they're going to be assigned. Clearly, they need a place to park that is onsite. If that's the wish of the Commission, that those parking spaces be assigned to units, I have no issue with that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Graham, you had a follow-up to that?
Chair Higgs, are there any speakers on this project?
We do have one, yes. Typically, we'll go through the questions and comments from the Commissioners and then turn to the speakers.
Well, thank you, Ms. Tessier. And I may have more questions after the speaker, if that's okay.
Sure, absolutely.
Mr. Loper, thank you for your time. If I can just go over a couple of my questions. This is for staff, so we talked about this a lot. The point for parking spots, you round up, is that right, Mr. Curtis?
That's correct. The code does round up for parking.
So, what's the minimum amount of spots before you have to round up? Because if we have one spot in a parking lot, and that, does that mean it has to be ADA?
Not always. That's something that, there are some nuances with the American Disabilities Act and the building code. So, we work through that. We do have someone in our office that deals with the ADA more often than I do. But there's a lot of advocacy for making sure that there's enough parking for ADA.
So there's, I just don't, I mean, I don't spend much time in those alleys, but I don't see many ADA spots back there. And is that, you said there's advocacy for increasing ADA spots, which we all want, but those kinds, three spots to have one ADA, that's not even close to point four?
I'm sorry, Madam, I misheard. Commissioner, the requirement is four percent.
Right. Oh, yeah, that's what I was saying. So, four percent of a hundred spots, yeah, we got four spots. But if it's, is there a minimum amount of spots before you have to round up to get one ADA parking spot? Like, if it's two spots, you have to have one ADA?
Commissioner Graham, that's something that we're still exploring. I know that there's so many parking spaces in downtown that, and even properties that don't meet the ADA requirements. A lot of them are grandfathered in. But when we look at new site plans, we're always looking at what are the abilities for providing ADA. And we all know that in some cases, it may not be as practical. And we may care about, more about that from a practical standpoint than the American Disabilities Act. But it's something that, you know, with this case, they meet the parking regulations with the zoning code. And if we could continue having the conversation, whether or not this one space needs to be restricted to ADA or not.
The, there's, so there's two one-bedrooms, and those each have a requirement of 1.25?
Yeah, I think that's correct.
And then the two-bedroom has a requirement of two cars?
If I could jump in there, no, one bedroom gets one car. Two bedrooms get 1.25 cars.
Okay, we meet that. And what, there were last-second changes to the solid waste container, refuse container? Can you, can you review those, Mr. Loper, once more briefly?
Previous to this, and we had a number of discussions and iterations, meeting with Solid Waste Division here at the city. The previous site plan had an angle, and by virtue of the angle, that took out that one spot. Now it's a face-in rollout container that can be rolled out, responsibility of the collective us, rolled out and be picked up off the alley, which is very common for what's happening up and down the alley today.
Is this, this container is supposed to be, maybe this is for staff, is this container supposed to be in a certain radius to serve a certain, you know, section of the occupants in the area? I guess, does it have to be right there? Is there any flexibility?
Chair Higgs and Commissioner Graham, the sanitation department has rules, and they've been moving away from sharing trash enclosures, especially for residential, to make sure that when there is residential, that they have access to dispose. And so, this has gone through many iterations in terms of the location of the trash and the size of the trash. And I think this is the latest iteration to try to, I guess, reduce its impact to the site plan as much as possible, where it's not even an angled access anymore. It's going to be a rollout, and something that the sanitation department is working with applicant team. And they struggle with a lot of these Old Town properties because of the sizes. But the sharing of the dumpsters and the billing becomes a practical issue that exists.
So, that's not meant, that's not intended to be shared with nearby residents?
That's intended to serve this property.
That, does that, does that property need an entire massive dumpster? Like, do the properties in the area have a dumpster? Like, are they all required to have a similar one?
So, Madam Chair and Commissioner Graham, that is up to the sanitation department. They work with applicant teams on what the needs are based off of their standards and their ability to perform that function.
So we don't know, there's a lot about this project we don't know. We don't know whether or not that dumpster is even necessary. Maybe it could be produced. We don't know if the parking spots are going to be assigned or not assigned. We don't know, we talked about, but it sounds like we don't know the ultimate fate of the ADA parking spot, or maybe even the parity of comparable spots having or required to have an ADA spot in a two or three parking lot, parking lot, parking spot, lot. There seems to be a lot of variables that are unknown. So, I think I'll pause my questions for the time being, and I will look forward to the public speaker. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gonzalez, you had another follow-up?
I agree with the Commissioner. There's a lot of variables in this. I'm looking forward to any kind of discussion that will give a little more clarity to the issue. I do not want to belabor the fact about parking. But parking is a very important ingredient in this downtown area. And we don't need to make decisions lightly, because this will impact future developments. This is something that needs to be very specific and well-thought-out. And at this point, because there's so many variables and everything going on, I just have reservations about going forward on this. But I'll be happy to listen to public comment and anything else that's brought forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments or questions from the Commissioners before we move to the public comment? Vice Chair Young?
Thank you, Chair Higgs. Mr. Curtis, I mean, do we have the purview up here to make a recommendation, just do away with that ADA stall?
Madam Chair and Vice Chairman, you know, as we process this, this case meets the zoning code, whether that's an ADA space or not. I think we're, we are more confident that it meets the zoning code as an ADA space. But that's something that we could continue to discuss to see if it needs to be restricted or not. But the code, but this case does meet the zoning code. You know, there's a lot of times where the practicality of parking may not make a lot of sense, but you know, there's, in the downtown, there's some frustration that property. there's some frustration that property owners have parking credits and so forth. And and so this may be chalked up to one of those realities that if there's an ADA space required, then an ADA space is provided. One of the the things that we may run into is that there isn't flexibility here, and the ADA space is required. But again, the parking meets the zoning code, whether it's restricted ADA or not. And turn, in terms of the sanitation, the sanitation on this property is required. That's not an unknown. Now, it's already been worked through to reduce its size and its function as a kind of a rollout before it gets picked picked up, as opposed to an angle pickup. So there's been a lot of work on this site plan to try to maximize the parking, increase the amount of parking along the street by eliminating the driveway, building the curb, and adding three striped parking spaces, probably to help with the practical matter of of parking downtown. So staff stands by its recommendation that this this is is ready to move forward, as well as some of the nuances can be worked through as we get to a city council and even development review board. Thank you.
Okay, this question's for Mr. Loper. What's the hesitancy to assign the parking stalls basis?
Vice Chair Young, if you allow me the indulgence, I'll go talk to the property owner and the architect. Never fails that there's something that I didn't think of, and assigned parking is one of those. And I I can't get a nod. I can't quite see them to say, so if you don't mind, I'll.
I actually have a two-part question then. So that's the first part. Second part is, can you access, obviously, you can access the ground floor office from First Avenue. Can you also access the second and third floors from the First Avenue side of the building?
From the First Avenue side, yes, there's a walkway that comes off here on the side of the building. It gives stair access.
And where's the elevator access? Is there an elevator in the building?
I I'm looking for a nod. Yes, I apologize.
So you can access the elevator from the First Avenue side?
Yeah, this angle makes it difficult for me to see exactly where it is, so I hesitate on the answer. And and resolve, and we can assign the parking spaces? They will be assigned? Yes, okay. Right.
Okay.
She has the top floor, so yes, they'll be assigned parking spaces.
And I think, you know, what some of the other commissioners were alluding to about this this ADA stalls, it's 4% of what's provided. That's closer to zero than it is one, if I do my math right. Plus, on the site plan, it's cut off, but you can start to see where there's striping for an accessible parking stall on First Avenue, an ADA stall.
Right.
To the left. Where the striping is.
Okay.
Yeah, about five stalls over. So I'm looking at, you know, my phone here and Ariel, and I'm seeing that one plus four or five others within 100 feet of this property that are all empty. So, you know, I I'm of the opinion that, you know, maybe keep things moving along, that we just make a recommendation that staff continues the discussions with the applicant to eliminate this ADA stall and just turn it into a traditional stall. Because there is, from what I can see, ample ADA parking surrounding this property. So.
Okay.
That's just what my my observations.
Thank you, Vice Chair Young.
Thank you.
Anything else from the commissioners, or can we move to the speaker?
One real quick, if I could, or two, actually, two.
Make sure I tell.
You know, I ask if the if these stalls out on the street on First Avenue could be assigned, and, you know, you rightfully said no. But I'll ask this anyway, could you make, and maybe this is where Commissioner Young was going, Vice Chair Young was going. Can you satisfy that ADA requirement by using a spot on the street?
It's a good question.
I'm I'm sorry, Madam Chair, was that for me?
Well, whoever knows the answer.
Yeah, that 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 will be part of the conversation that we're going to have regarding whether this one space is restricted or not.
So it's not determined. It's it's a possibility.
It's, yeah, certainly, we'll go through what we have on the street and what we feel that the American Disabilities Act requires. And we're not really inclined to restrict more parking, so we're open to that. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
And if I might add real quickly, there's also parking structure across the street. Not advocating that people go across the street throughout without a crosswalk, but there is a parking structure that I imagine has ADA's accessible spaces.
Yeah, I would I would guess there's probably some sort of stipulation for proximity for the safety of of ADA. Anyhow, okay, unless there's anything else from commissioners, I'll move on to our one speaker.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
I just wanted to ask one question. Because of the ADA space, then you've already, you you have, in fact, made the compliance for the ramp and everything else like that. I didn't see it. I didn't see it real well in the.
We we will have to, as we go through the the plan review process and through further through DRB, make sure that it meets those requirements for accessibility, if there is still an ADA space.
Okay, and if and if upon that design, you also have, it will have access to the elevator then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, with that, I'd like to move on to the, we do have one request to speak, Mr. Bob Pedgman. Mr. Pedgman, if you could please state your name and address, and just a reminder, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Chairman Higgs and Planning Commission members. I want to say first, this is a very attractive project, and it's a very reasonable project. I've seen these mixed-use projects take over the whole lot and actually abuse it. It only takes up the first part of the lot, so it leaves pretty much 50 feet to the alley, which is great for parking, but then a lot of that parking disappeared. Can I put this here?
Yes, uh huh.
As a show?
I'm not yet, there we go.
All right, so so when I went to the open house, I saw that, you know, there's a two-car garage, and then there were three other spaces and the trash space. I was very happy, because I said, okay, great, so the two spaces in the garage are for the two-bedroom on the third floor. We have one space per per one-bedroom unit. There's an extra one, which is a bonus nowadays, right? And a trash compactor. Fast forward to what ended up on the planning commission report was was this. So this enormous, giant, great room-sized space was allocated to a dumpster, which is, to me, this is a restaurant situation, not for a 900 square foot office and three small apartments. And so wiped out the parking spaces, and and the third parking space became an ADA space. And then there's wasted space between the ADA and the building, so essentially wiped that out. I emailed staff and asked that they can look at this. They came up with one more space right here. So now that, you know, I don't have that that diagram to put up, but that's what was showed by by staff. But see, I I think that you can gain another parking space and still retain the ADA space anyway, because this was my recommendation. Many locations in in Old Town have similar projects where the trash space is smaller, it's nine by 12. And I can point you to those addresses, and I can email you later. One is on Craftsman Court, one's on Main Street, they're both mixed-use projects. And if you do that, you can you can actually have the trash in the proper size, two extra spaces and the ADA. So that that's my solution. Now, a few comments were made about assigned space. Well, how can you assign an ADA space? If it's for only ADA, Commissioner Ortell was right on the money. You have to rent to an ADA person with an ADA sticker. Otherwise, they'll just sit there empty. And to say it's the code, when one of them is ADA and it could become rendered useless, unless there's an ADA car there? I don't know. That's the code, but it's really not. To suggest that you can park across the street in the parking lot, that's exactly what, well, first of all, those parking lots, a lot of them have restrictions after 2:00. So a full-time person cannot use a parking lot, and the street spaces have three hour, three hour minimums. So that's that. I think just just one last thing on the ADA. 4% of parking, 100 space lot, four of them are ADA, fantastic, right? But four units, one of them is ADA, what's that? You know, 1/8 of a spot? Think about now, if we have 10 of these projects, and every one of them is required to have one ADA spot, now you have 40 parking spots with 10 of them being ADA spots. I mean, that's ridiculous. There has to be another way that that this can be handled. I don't think the small projects should be required for ADA. There has to be some threshold. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pedgman. Any follow-up response to that from from staff or the applicant for the comments from the speaker? Not at this time. Any follow-up questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Graham?
Thank you, Chair Higgs. I want to thank the speaker, and I want to thank everybody else for their time. I, in studying this project, I think I have four comments to make. I think adding angled spots on the street is a totally separate matter that should not, I I appreciate that. I think that's great. We're removing the driveway and adding angled spots. I think that's a totally separate matter that should not be factored whatsoever in what's going on behind the building. I know that was brought up, and it's, it almost sounded like it was trying to sweeten the deal. But imagine every future project in downtown Scottsdale trying to explain the context of, well, they did that, but they also had some added angled angular spots, and that you just get into that minutia that nobody's going to understand, I think. So setting the precedent there, I think that those should remain totally separate. Uh, second point is, I I maintain that the trash dumpster makes no sense for a 900 square foot light office building in three units. I I just don't understand why we have a massive trash can. So I maintain that, and it seems like there's flexibility on that. It seems like, well, it was, I mean, we we saw the rendering a second ago, how even how much bigger it was, almost felt like three times the size, but it's been reduced and 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 made smaller. So that, to me, does not make sense. My third comment is the, putting the ADA parking spot in the back, it reduces very precious and scarce parking. And that, we we have to be very careful about every spot in our downtown, every parking spot in our downtown. Many other cities across the valley, they've been, they've taken a very aggressive anti-car, anti-parking, and they try to squeeze cars out and push them out. And and I think that's something we have to be very guarded from. So every spot, I think, should be carefully watched. The the mentionings, Mr. Loper mentioned the parking structure across the street, and he said that they shouldn't, that's not to be used by anybody, but mentioning the parking spot, I think, is very inappropriate, because this this panel spent countless hours, or spent many hours, and then we sent it to the city council, and they spent many hours and many hours from precious staff's time to update the parking structure so that we don't build our residences that then go and use parking structures. So I don't think we should go there. I think that this project, there's a lot of variables. I don't want to make it more difficult for the applicant, because I think it is going to be a gorgeous project when it's completed. They don't take up every square inch, they don't wring every square inch out of it that they can. And I do think it's going to enhance our downtown. I think there's just a few variables to iron out, and then it'll be a wonderful project. Thank you, Chair Higgs.
Thank you. Mr. Curtis, just for quick clarity, the the concern that Commissioner Graham brought up about the size of the trash container, and you did say that there's a requirement to have that there, is a requirement to have it to be at that size per the square footage of the building?
So, Madam Chair, the, I know the sanitation department looked at this with the applicant team to try to reduce the the size and the impact of the trash location and and how it's enclosed and how it's accessed. That conversation can continue. We don't have anybody from the sanitation department here tonight, but as you could see, it's been, it's been reduced in size, and we could, again, just like the ADA space, we could continue having more conversation with the sanitation to see if there's anything that can be done to to whittle it down even more, but it is required on the site. So it's just a matter of, can we make it a little bit smaller?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Commissioner Scarborough?
Thank you, Chair Higgs. I appreciate the comments regarding parking. Based on the site plan, the applicant provided, the three spaces in the front are not a part of the consideration of meeting code required for parking spaces. Based on the latest site plan that we've seen, that has the two garaged and the two surface spaces with the trash enclosure oriented differently, meets code. If we can squeeze a fifth one, great. I think we do need to be cautious about ADA requirements. I think it's always better to be conservative in terms of ADA compliance. So for parking, for me, I don't have any hesitation or issues with that. And so for that, if there are no other comments, and I'll wait, but I would like to make a motion, but I'll wait for anybody else who'd like to make a comment.
I think we have one from Commissioner Ortell.
Well, if that motion could include a a condition that the spaces, the, at least the the four non-accessible, that doesn't sound right, the four non-handicap spaces would be assigned to each to each of the three tenants, that would be good.
Thank you, Commissioner Ortell. Mr. Curtis, does the planning commission have purview to do that, or is that more of a DRB item?
The planning commission could could make that as part of the motion, absolutely. And then we'll we'll clean it up as part of a stipulation to the city council. I was just informed, Madam Chair, that there may have been two speakers on this case.
The second speaker I have is the actual applicant. Yeah, Mr. Greg Loper, and so I assumed tonight, and I introduced him as such, that it looks like we had that covered, but if we did not, please let me know. We're we're good. Mr. Loper, okay. Okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that, Commissioner Scarborough?
I'll make a motion, and I appreciate Commissioner Ortell's friendly amendment, and I'll make sure to add it in. So I move to make a recommendation to city council for the approval of case 9ZN1997, number two, per the staff recommended stipulations, as well as the stipulation that the parking be assigned after determining that the proposed zoning district map amendment are consistent and conform with the adopted general plan.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Scarborough. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Commissioner Ortell. Can we please get a roll call vote?
Chair Higgs, can we have discussion?
Can we do this at this time, Mr. Curtis? With a motion on the table?
I'm going to defer to to Mr. Padilla on your question.
Yes, I think a discussion has already been had, and so now you're just simply calling for a vote.
Oh, Mr. Padilla, if I if I may, Chair Higgs, pardon me for the interruption. Every every motion, after the after the motion's seconded, a discussion may ensue appropriately.
Yes, I I don't disagree with you. I just thought the discussion had already been had. Is is there additional discussion that you want to bring up that is not, that was not already discussed earlier, is really more the question?
Yes.
Then the, then it would be up to the chairman to allow that.
So if if we do allow that, then do we need to potentially then start the motion over?
No, it depends on the. Just a discussion.
The motion would remain the same, unless someone wants to amend it.
I see. Okay, okay. Commissioner Graham?
Chair Higgs, I promise I'll be brief. So the the motion that's before us, it doesn't mention anything about about addressing the dumpster. Is that correct?
No, that'd be a DRB item. So I mean, that would be worked on with staff, and it would go through DRB, which is, would actually control the the site plan, landscape plan, and elevations of the project.
Okay, and then, and, okay, with that said, I think that for this motion, I think there's still more variables that are uncertain, and so I think that's the end of my comment. Thank you, Chair Higgs. I think there's still more variables that are uncertain, and so, um, I think that's the end of my comment. Thank you, Chair Higgs, for answering me.
Thank you. So I believe we are ready for a roll call vote.
Chair Higgs?
Yes.
Vice Chair Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
No.
Commissioner Urtell?
Yes.
Commissioner Serena?
No.
Commissioner Graham?
No.
Motion passes three, four.